Of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, January 14, 2025 at 7:01 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Tonight, our prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Senate will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Gavella.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Senate.
I am here. I'm participating remotely due to medical reasons. I am alone in the room, and I can hear everybody.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Alderman Senate.
I'm sorry, does this make it any better?
A little better.
A little bit. I'll check my settings.
Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Thibault.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
I am here. I am not at the -- I am home. I am home, as my husband is very ill, and I am unable to leave him at the moment. I am in a room alone where no one can hear me.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you.
He's got to be able to be heard by everyone in the room.
Okay. Alderman Senate. We need to check back in with you to make sure that we can hear you. Everyone in the room needs to be able to hear you.
Okay, can you let me know how things are?
It's a little light, but if you could talk a little louder or adjust your setting, that would be preferable.
All right. I will mess around with this to see what's going on with it, because usually it doesn't act like this.
Can everyone hear him?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Senate.
Thank you.
So also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton, and Deputy Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard. Communication?
Communication has been received from President Laurie Wiltshire, Board of Alderman, regarding calling a special Board of Alderman meeting on January 14, 2025 at 7:00 PM relative to trustees of trust funds.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Presentation.
Trustee of the trust funds.
I would recognize, I don't see CFO Griffin, but I do see Dawn Enright, Treasurer-Tax Collector.
May I sit in one of the seats, or would you like me?
Sure.
Yeah, Alderman Senate won't be here. You can sit in his seat.
We're here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dawn Enright. I am the Treasurer-Tax Collector for the City of Nashua. I'm coming to you this evening to give you an update as to where the city is in regards to our trust funds and capital reserves.
That's okay, I'll click it for you.
Load, Dawn.
Oh, you have to aim it down. Thank you. So the city has many trust funds and capital reserves. They are organized under several different boards within the city. The Library Board of Trustees takes, has oversight of all of the library trust funds, and that's under our charter for Chapter 11. Trust funds have been around for quite a long time. I was just perusing through them this afternoon and came up with some amazing dates. 1889 appears to be the oldest trust fund that the library has, the Moses Hunt Lecture Fund. Woodlawn Cemetery Board of Trustees has oversight over all of the trust funds for Woodlawn Cemetery, and that's under the Charter for Chapter 3. The oldest one for Woodlawn Cemetery was 1895, their Perpetual Care Fund. Edgewood Cemetery and Superbian Cemetery are the oversight of the Edgewood Board of Trustees for all of their trust funds, and that's under Chapter 3. 1893 is the Edgewood Maintenance Fund. That's their oldest one. These trustees work with financial institutions to have management over all of their trust The city's trust funds, which are managed by the Treasurer and the Deputy Treasurer for the City of Nashua, these are trust funds that are created for public purpose throughout the city, and these are approved through resolutions. Then we have our BPW Pension Fund, which is the retirement fund for all of our BPW And that is overseen by the BPW Pension Board of Trustees, and they also engage with a financial institution to manage all of their funds. The capital reserve funds are managed by the Treasurer and the Deputy Treasurer. The largest capital reserve fund that we have would be your Capital Equipment Reserve Fund for the purchase of all vehicles throughout the city. So you have many boards that engage with financial institutions in order to manage these funds in a professional, proper manner. On top of that oversight, you have the city treasurer and the trust accountant that oversee all of the financials, the monthly financials that come through, and we monitor for income, gains, expenses, and the recording of broker fees. All of this information is tracked monthly, and at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, there are reportings that are done through the DOJ's website, inputting all of the trust funds that the city has. That form is called the MS-9. The MS-9 is audited by the Department of Justice. It is a back-and-forth conversation that happens between the Treasurer or Deputy Treasurer, trust accountant, and the DOJ. They question items every year. Some of the questions that they may ask is if an expenditure is happening out of a trust fund, out of the principal portion, they may ask that their understanding was it was a non expendable, and we have to go back and look at original documents to determine whether the misunderstanding is on our part or on the DOJ's part. But it is a very good working relationship to make sure that everything is being recorded and managed according to all of the directives for these trusts. The MS-10 report is also reported on. The MS-10 is actually a reporting of the holdings, what we hold for securities on June 30 of any given fiscal year. That is what is reported to the DOJ, and the information is transferred to the DRA once it is approved by the DOJ for final retention in the DRA's website. So the state statute is RSA 31. This is, 31 gives the authority for the acceptance of donations, gifts, from private individuals. These donations come to the city with directives that give the purpose of each fund and an agent to expend. We cannot accept any of these funds without those two things, because that is what we must follow, are the directives. We also can create expendable trust funds with public funds. They can be appropriated through the budget, and that is called a revocable trust fund, because with the right votes, it can be reversed, because that is public monies. Then you also have non expendable trust funds that can be, donor funds can be non expendable. That's if somebody would want to set up a trust, give you $10,000 to repair a building or a monument, and only use that for the repair of that monument, but they want it to last in perpetuity, and they tell you, you cannot spend the principal. You can only spend the income earned. So we must track it in that manner and not spend any of the principal. Capital reserve funds are governed under RSA 34. Capital reserve funds are set up with public monies for a specific purpose. Examples would be for vehicle purchases, road pavement, monument maintenance, stadium improvements. These are all types of funds that can be set up to be able to have the money set aside to be able to accomplish all of the needs of the citizens. They all must be passed through a resolution and signed. The resolution would always have an agent to expend on that as well. All of these original directives are extremely important in running proper capital reserves and trust funds. So the city has been maintaining a good record of all of these expended, all of the trust funds and capital reserves. We have had multiple layers of oversight in the management of these, the auditing through the DOJ and the retention through the DRA. Back when I started here in May, I think one of my first meetings with the mayor, I said to him, I've learned a lot about trust funds and capital reserves, and I know that we can probably do it more efficiently here. So he said, he agreed, he said, let's look into it. Let's see what we could possibly do. So now I've been working several months now with all of the boards and having discussions with them of some things that I have learned throughout my career that I feel would benefit us here at the city, to be able to be more efficient, save money, be able to have less fees, and continue to have the same return, if not better. So the first thing that I'm proposing is that we activate the trustee of trust funds and capital reserves in accordance with RSA 31 and 34. In that RSA, it states that you shall have a three- to five-member board with two-year term, and you could have two additional alternates also assigned. So then I looked further, and I found that in the city charter, under Chapters 2, 3, and 11, it states that funds will be invested by the treasurer. This is great. We do that now, but we can incorporate the trustee of trust funds and still keep that authority under the treasurer. So then I looked further at our ordinance and found that Chapter 5, Administration of Government, talks specifically to the trustee of trust funds and capital reserves, and helps me define the structure that we will move forward with in activating these trustees. So the mayor, the president of the Board of Alderman, myself as the finance officer, and two appointees for citizens will be assigned to the trustee of trust funds to complete the full board. So I had that discussion with the mayor, and at tonight's meeting, he will be presenting to you two appointees for those positions. And I'm very excited that when I started out on this quest, when I spoke with the boards, I informed them that I recognized all the work that they had done and appreciated how they were able to continue to grow these funds, and wanted to tap into their knowledge and understanding of the city's funds and give consideration to joining the trustee of trust funds. And I'm happy to report that both of the appointees that are going to be presented to you tonight are current members on the current boards, the library trustees and the BPW pension. So then the second step would be for the trustees of trust funds to devise an investment policy. According to the RSAs, the trustees of trust funds are to approve an investment policy yearly and filing with the DOJ. So my, our first goal for the trustees of trust funds is to formulate an investment policy. Once again, the investment policy, I would like to commend the library department, the library trustees, for having a fabulous investment policy with their financial institution. I have utilized a lot of the language from their investment policy for the initial draft to be presented to the trustees of trust funds. They've done a great job. And then the second thing that I wanted to be sure that we memorialized the work that had been done, we are going to be looking at segmenting, segmenting in the policy for each of the trusts, and library, Edgewood, Woodlawn, Pension, and Capital Reserves. They will have their own section, so they can continue to invest in the manner in which they have accustomed to. We will have expendable trust, non expendable, and capital reserves, and they will, they will assign percentages for cash portion, fixed income, and equities, what they want to invest in. So we will be able to mirror or come as close as possible with what they have been doing with their current financial advisors. Once the investment policy is drafted, we are going to take that drafted policy, and we're going to go back to the boards and present what has been developed. We are looking to the board, the full boards, to give us their input as to suggestions, recommendations for us to move forward with the investment policy. We will take into consideration the historical work that has been done. Once we have a finalized draft of the investment policy, we will work with the purchasing department and create an RFP to engage with a sole financial investment provider. We are looking to decrease the fees by pulling everything together under one advisor. We're going to increase or sustain the income that we are getting now, increase or sustain growth, provide timely, monthly reporting, and provide the MS-9 and 10 reporting. In my previous engagements with, with financial institutions as a trustee of trust fund, we were able to engage with an institution where they don't charge you anything additional, and we were getting a great return. Nothing additional in order to do this reporting, and you get a great return. So lastly, once we get the bid proposals back, the trustees of trust funds will review the bids, and will make a recommendation of a final selection. That selection will be presented to the Board of Trustees. It will be an open discussion of the pros and cons of what they see in the, in the bid, and it could also end up in a presentation by the institution that has been selected. We will work with the boards and make sure that we answer all the questions and we get what is best for all of the trust funds and capital reserves. So this Board of Trustees of trust funds will meet a minimum of quarterly with a financial review, in-person presentation by the financial institution. That is our goal. We want them to be able to show that they are following the policies that have been set forward by the board, and at any time, the investment policy could be reviewed and updated if returns are not satisfactory to the other Board of Trustees. Under RSA 3416 and 3138, the trustees of trust funds have the authority to engage with a broker, or a bank, or a management investment advisor, and they also have the authority to charge the expenses to the trust funds. Trustees of trust funds do not have general expense authority. That means that the directive, the agents to expend will not change on any of the trust funds or capital reserves with the instatement of the trustee of trust funds. Trustee of trust funds is purely oversight of the investments. That doesn't mean that occasionally the treasurer might have to remind them as they're looking through the investments and they question an expenditure, I have to remind them sometimes, you don't have authority over it. I can make sure that it was proper with, in accordance with the directives, but a trustee of trust funds does not have the authority to disallow an expenditure. So as I stated earlier, the members of the trustee of trust funds for the City of Nashua will be the President Laurie Wiltshire, Mayor James Donchis, Treasurer Dawn Enright, and two citizens which will be appointed at the February 11 meeting. And as I stated in the RSA, there is allowance for two alternate members to be appointed to a one-year term if, if we so choose. At this time, we have not given any consideration to that. I want to thank you very much for your attention, and I welcome any questions if anyone should have any.
Thank you, Ms. Enright. I appreciate your being here this evening and for your presentation.
Thank you.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. So thank you for coming and going over this. I think this is great. Question I have is, as this process goes on, is there a way that, and here it says a lot about, you know, updating the Board of Trustees and all that, is there a way to update us on the process, on how it's going? And just, it feels like sometimes some of these things we talk about in here, and then we never hear about anything again, and I wonder, was that done? Is that, you know, what's going on with that? So if we could be just updated once in a while, just on the process, would be, would be helpful to know that this is going through. And I would strongly suggest that we do get two alternates, just to make sure we have two people ready to go if something, you know, if somebody can't make a meeting, or whatever happens, whatever the rules are. So, thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, you, you, you cite the city charter, you cite the RSAs, and our, also our own ordinances, and so I'm wondering, have we not been in compliance with all of that? And is this going to put us in compliance?
Ms. Enright?
Thank you for the question. Well, the DOJ has always approved our MS-9s and 10s, and with, with the language in the RSAs and the charter, we're structured a little bit different, but the oversight was there, and the DOJ felt sufficient that we were, we had our checks and balances, so every year they approved our MS-9s and 10s. So now with the, with the new So now with the, with the new proposal, we're coming more in line with the way the language is in the statutes, the charter, and the ordinance.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So another question. So the trustee of trust funds, this committee, will be setting a policy. So will they be independent? Will the Board of Aldermen have the ability to say, for example, you know, we don't want you to invest in fossil fuels?
Thank you for the question. It's the trustees of trust funds that, that devise the investment policy and it gets approved by the, by the, by the other Boards of Trustees. You're asking whether or not the full Board of Aldermen would have authority? Am I understanding your question?
Yes.
In my past practice, the, the full board has not had authority over it. I, I don't see any reason why there can't be discussion about certain investments could be recommended to the trustees of trust funds for consideration. I know that the investment policy that, that, the draft that I have proposed to present to the trustee of trust funds for a starting point does have some language in there that I actually shared from the city of Concord that states that they will not invest in any tobacco companies or any alcohol companies, things like that. So I don't see any reason why you couldn't make any recommendations once you see the full investment policy.
But.
Alderman Jettie.
So as I understand it, the trustee of trust funds would be independent. They would, they would set the policy. We, the Board of Aldermen or I suppose any, any citizen could make a recommendation or a suggestion, but, but the Board, the trustee of trust funds would, would be independent. They'd make their own decision about the, setting the policy, which I think is probably a good idea, but is that the way? That's the way it would be, as I understand it.
Thank you. That is how it has always worked in my past practice, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Enright, I am a member of the BPW pension board. I'll proudly state that we're about 82 to 87 percent funded compared to other pensions around the universe. That's quite a feat. We're doing all right. Now, in looking at this, and I'm very happy to see that, Mr. Fedett's involved. He's your representation from the trustees of the board. But would this eliminate, like, the Board of Trustees for the public works? Because the majority of our discussions has to do with our investments. So if that is, seems to be shuffled over, then would that terminate that particular board?
Thank you for the question. No, it does not terminate the board at all. It alleviates the responsibility of day-to-day tracking of the investments. But as I stated, we will be in touch with the boards because you will get the reports of how your investments are doing. And the communication will be open as to whether you're satisfied with the returns or not and whether or not we have to revisit the investment policy that was approved. Because the BPW pension, your investment portfolio percentages is going to be set so that we can continue to grow and develop the, the investments the way you have been. So we're not disregarding what work you have done. We're just hoping to pull it all under one roof and give you the ability to focus on the, the expenditure side of it. And the, when, when I spoke with the board, we talked about spending more time on educating the members, on how the, how the pension works and so forth. So the hopes is that we will be able to alleviate some of the burden, but be able to still produce and provide you with the information on how well the investments continue to, to continue to grow.
Madam President, just for clarity. So that would mean our meetings with Hockum and Huckum or whatever they are there would cease to exist in a way as far as any investors.
Thank you for the question. The investment review that we get quarterly from the BPW pension advisors would happen at the trustee of trust fund level. And any member of any of the boards that have been involved would be invited to attend those meetings if, if they so chose.
All right. And Madam President, just one housecleaning issue. You said the DOJ and everybody has approved everything in the past. But to say it's 100% fitting into the charter, sounds like the charter needs to be modernized. Would that, would you recommend that? That perhaps maybe we need to look at that to make this concept work?
Thank you for the question. I, I'd be happy to look at it at, at the onset. I don't know if we have to make any changes, but I would be happy to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. You had mentioned that we had been submitting the MS nines and MS tens. I don't know which form lists the structure of the oversight. And then adding the two folks that we're going to nominate tonight and then eventually put on there. And you have mentioned that the DOJ was, they'd signed off on our structure and oversight. Seeing as it was part of our charter, it sounds like this is an addition of something we, we should have been doing, but haven't for some reason. How long has it gone since we've had those two appointed positions?
Thank you for the question. I just want to repeat it to make sure that I have it correctly. The, you're asking how long it's been since those two positions have been vacant?
Yes.
I had a conversation with David Fedett and he stated that they had two members of the trustee of trust funds back in 2000? Two, early 2000s? For a few years in relation to capital reserves in approving expenditures for the capital reserves. So at that point, we had two members. But several years later, and you'll have to excuse me because I wasn't involved in it. That committee basically was, was stopped and the two appointees were not appointed.
Okay. Just one follow-up, please.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. The MS nines and tens, where can we find those? Are those on the city website? Are those, where, so if we want to see how those funds are invested, how can we, how can we check that out?
They're on, they're at the DOJ. They're retained at the DOJ. We do have financial statements for all of the banks that we invest with. And we don't have them on the website. That would be something that I would discuss with the trustees of trust funds on how we can go forward and be more transparent. In my prior practice, what we would do is when we filed the MS nine and 10, we would give a report to the board of the filing. And they got a copy of it and it was put into the minutes. That's what we did in the past.
Okay. Also, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here this evening. Oh, Mayor, yes.
Just an answer to Mr. Sol, our Alderman Sullivan's question. So in reality, the city has never had a committee overseeing the investments since, you know, a single committee. Because when this existed, all they were doing is approving, you know, the purchase of equipment, meaning trucks, fire trucks, things like that. They were not overseeing the investments. So in reality, the city has never had this. But now we will. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I saw motion at the January 14th special meeting of the Board of Aldermen, so be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yeas, 0 nays.
And motion carries and we are adjourned at 7:41 PM. Thank you. On Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, at 7:45 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Tonight, the prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Thibodeau will lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
I am here. I'm participating remotely due to medical reasons and I am alone in the room. I can hear everyone and I hope my audio is better.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah.
Alderman Cle.
I am here. I am also remote, attending remotely. My husband is very ill. I am alone in the room and I can hear everyone and I too hope everyone can hear me. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
14 present, one absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton, and Deputy Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. First, a rather sad item, which is a follow-up to last meeting. We talked about the fact that Bill Toomey, a longtime public works engineer, had retired or was about to retire and had announced his retirement. In the interim, in a few days before he was going to leave work, he did pass away. And I've known Bill for a long time. I know many of you have as well. And it was just too bad that he was not able to live long enough to enjoy his retirement along with his wife and his many grandchildren. I know he was a coach up in Manchester for, for baseball for a long, long time here as well. And he was just a good guy and it's just a sad, sad turn of events. I also wanted to mention, Madam President, that in late December, the depart, the state depart, the state, New Hampshire Department of Business and Economic Affairs announced that Nashua was named as one of 18 housing champions in the state of New Hampshire. This scoring was based upon our commitment to advancing housing initiatives. You all, of course, had been, have been very involved in that. And as one of the designated communities, we can apply for additional grants supporting housing, affordable housing development, and critical infrastructure. Another award, which I think probably you saw, was the Sunset Heights School, which was chosen as one of, one of two distinguished schools in the state of New Hampshire based upon the improvement in academic performance there. Senator Maggie Hassan was there this past week and for, to do a congratulatory ceremony. This is all due to the hard work of the principal, Erin Anderson, along with her staff and of course, the students. I was, I thought it was fun that Senator Hassan asked people, asked the kids, and the whole school was there. You know, how many of you like math? And like many, many of the kids. I, I figured like, no one likes math, you know? But they all raised their hand. How many of you like to read? And many, many kids raised their hand. So, I mean, clearly the staff has done a really good job in instilling, inspiring the kids. And so we're going to ask them to come here in two weeks to do, you know, proclamation and just. proclamation and just officially congratulate them. The principal couldn't come tonight, so anyway, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And finally, Madam President, I want to say a little bit about one of the items on tonight's agenda. I know a very controversial one, and that has to do with the outdoor dining, or the expanded outdoor dining. As I said last, a week ago, we met a week ago, I think cooperation and compromise is a very important, are very important values for us, particularly when we see what happens down in D. C. and elsewhere. This has been an issue that's been debated for quite a while, and obviously, there's some people opposed, and they've been, you know, here and certainly vocal on that, on that score. So Alderman Clemmons proposed a compromise, and one that I'm going to say that I hope you will support. But before, and I don't want to back away from that at all, I think we should go with the compromise and just sort of try to resolve this in a more peaceful, you know, in a way that satisfies the most possible people. But I, as a believer in downtown, and as actually a believer in the outdoor dining, I wanted to make it clear why I think the outdoor dining has worked and has, and were there not so much controversy, I would think that it should continue. And that has to do with the economic impact that it has on the city of Nashua. So we have Placer A. I., and some people have disputed its accuracy, but when you test it on crowds that, where you sort of have an in-person estimate, like the holiday stroll, it comes out basically the same or very similar to the estimates that we've had for a long time. For example, we've often estimated twenty to twenty-five thousand people at the holiday stroll. Placer A. I. puts it at twenty-four thousand. So it is an accurate measure. And when you place it on the outdoor dining, the expanded outdoor dining only, we find that in calendar year twenty twenty-four, hundred-and-fifty-five thousand people took advantage of it. Forty-four percent from Nashua, six percent from Hudson, and the remainder from communities across New Hampshire and in Massachusetts. Now, if you, I'm sure most all of you have had dinner downtown, and, you know, you're spending at least, I'm going to say, at least twenty to thirty dollars. And that's probably a low estimate. At twenty dollars a person, even a few beers, a couple of beers, you know, costs nearly that. At twenty dollars a person, times a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, that is three million dollars of economic impact. If it's thirty dollars, times a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, now it's, it's over four-and-a-half million dollars. Now, at the last meeting, Alderman Sullivan made a good point, which was, he said, well, the investment that we're making in transit is really worthwhile, because it yields, for every dollar invested, it yields three-point-seven dollars of economic activity. And that's a pretty good multiplier. And I agreed with him completely. And I think his figures are accurate. But when you think about the outdoor dining, the economic impact, the multiplier, is far, far greater than the three-point-seven. I mean, what does it cost us? Now, there've been various estimates. Liz Hanam has estimated forty-three thousand dollars a year. Mr. Guthro at the last meeting estimated two-hundred. Now, I think two-hundred per year, I think he was talking about, or it was unclear, either three years or over one year, but let's just say it was one year. I think that's high for one year. I think Hanam is closer to it, but let's say it's two-hundred. With a three-million-dollar impact, that's fifteen to one, not three-point-seven to one, it's fifteen. And if it's the four-and-a-half million, it now becomes over twenty to one, for every dollar expended. And if you take a more, I think, a more accurate estimate, let's say a hundred thousand, now we're somewhere around thirty to fifty dollars per dollar spent. There is nothing that comes close to that, in terms of the amount we invest in something, in terms of creating economic activity. So, and we are looking for a downtown that is more, feels people-friendly, and in my opinion, it helps with that. But, so those are my reasons for thinking, for supporting it all the way along. But I also have, as I've said, believe that the compromise, accommodation, collaboration is an important value. This has been a controversial issue, I realize, for several years now. And therefore, I think the compromise proposed by Mr. Clemmons, by Alderman Clemmons, even though the restaurants may not take advantage on Main Street, but still, we'll see, because of, you know, the very small placement, I still think it's a reasonable compromise that, under the circumstances, we should adopt, and therefore, I hope you will, as I said, vote for and move forward with the Clemmons plan. Thank you very much, Madam President.
You're welcome. Response to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to go into outdoor dining. I just want to talk about the housing champion. For me, I see it as the state acknowledging that Nashua can do a better job with affordable housing and housing in general than it can, because you've got to think about it. We're getting this from the state that's dead last with the increase of homelessness in the entire state. And I think someone up at the State House is realizing that the mayor and his team and this board can do a better job than they can. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Tevo.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I just want to say condolences to the Toomey family. Bill, I didn't know him very well, but he did, I used to see him even after he retired from coaching Cal Ripken. He'd be hanging out by the game, watching. So he did love coaching baseball, and, you know, he retired just about the time I got up to his level where he was coaching. So just condolences. It's sad that he had retired and so shortly passed away from his retirement, or was going to retire, so condolences to his family. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. It would be amiss for me not to mention Sunset Heights. I have a granddaughter over there. They do fantastic work over at Sunset Heights. I was so proud of her and that accomplishment of the school. And on one other note, Nashua seemed to do well, regardless of all the naysayers. They kick butt every single time, and I'm proud of the city, and I'm proud of all the things that this city always accomplished, regardless of all the naysayers.
Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular Board of Alderman meetings of December tenth and December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Lisa Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Alderman, O-dash-twenty-four-dash-zero-four-two. Communication has been received from John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, regarding Nashua Center for the Arts Capital Reserve Fund update. Communication has been received from Amy Gerard, Purchasing Manager, regarding contract award for right peers.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Next is period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Tonight, we have four speakers signed up. Laura Cahoon.
Laura Cahoon, thirty Greenwood Drive. Before this board approves the appointments by the mayor for the trustees of the trust funds and capital reserve funds, they should know that Mr. Griffin's memo was totally incorrect. In November of two thousand twenty-three, the city set up the Art Center Fund, Trust Fund, as a miscellaneous revenue fund under the General Fund, which is against RSA Chapter twenty-four, Section thirty-four, semicolon, five, which prohibits the intermingling of trust funds with other city funds. Upon a resident informing the city of this mistake, the city then set up an account in the trust section. However, these trust funds should have been set up under a trust fund that is funded by contributions, not by appropriations. Therefore, this trust fund should not be part of the budget, as Mr. Griffin stated. The first check that the trust for the Art Center received was back in November two thousand twenty-three. And as of today, because the city has set this account up incorrectly, the trust funds' monies have not been receiving any interest as they should be, or should I say, the way the resolution was written and approved by this Board of Alderman. Before you wrote on the trustees of the Art Center Fund, it is very important that the actual funds be transferred immediately in order to start collecting interest on this approximately seventy thousand dollars. These funds should be immediately available, as they had no right to be put in trust funds funded by appropriations. I'm also asking the board to vote no on the elimination of certain on-street parking for the extended outdoor dining. These barriers are not welcoming, and a lot of residents refuse to go downtown because they are up.
One minute.
These barriers are helping no one, because it looks, if you look around, very few people are using this outdoor dining. I don't know where Mayor Donches came up with these figures, but I find them very hard to believe. However, this is hurting small businesses downtown, and that should not be happening. Thank you.
Next, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street. First of all, I want to hope and request that all of you would unanimously support Joshua Nahili to the zoning board. I watched his interview. I thought he was spectacular, very well-qualified, very professional, and I hope he has the support of the full board. Also, I would like to say that I'm not in favor of the barriers. I do like the compromise. I don't like the commitment to never review it again, based on what the Economic Development Director said, that none of the Main Street businesses would go for that compromise. Given that, I really feel that we just shouldn't do it. It's not worth it. And the way the mayor was speaking tonight, it was as if outdoor dining wasn't going to exist. You still have outdoor dining, just it's not extended into a lane for certain businesses. So I don't think the numbers are going to disappear. You're not going to have a really decent revenue generator with outdoor dining, because it still exists on the sidewalk, and they can still have outdoor dining. It's not all lost. I want to address Mr. Griffin's letter that was put in the board packet, and I will address in the last three minutes what the treasurer spoke to you about, the board about. I feel there's a real total lack of transparency here, total, really major problems. You know, you formed a resolution in two thousand twenty-three for the Art Center Capital Reserve Fund, with contributions coming from spectacle, live, quarterly, to be deposited into this Capital Reserve Fund to do maintenance for the Art Center. And now we're seeing in a letter from Attorney Griff, I mean, John Griffin, CFO Griffin, that that money is actually going to be properly set up into that fund in fiscal year twenty-six. Twenty-three to twenty-six, why was it in earning interest? Why was it in the fund? You made a resolution for a dedicated, non-lapsing, interest-bearing account. And when I tried to find, now, mind you, this has been going on for ten weeks, and getting the information, while this treasurer says there's accounts and books-
One minute.
-and they're managed every month, and the information's in there, I can tell you through write-to-nos, we could not get it. Okay? We could not get it. You saw my letter to you, the MS nine and ten. They needed five weeks. I went to the D. R. A., got it in two days, and now I hear that they actually don't keep them down here. I don't think they lawfully responded to my request. If they didn't have the record, they should have directed me where to go. There are so many questions I have about lawful responses, and I'm really, really concerned with this letter.
Thirty seconds.
And Ms. Cahoon is correct. If you take a look at the summary of the revenues, of the reserves, trust funds, it breaks it down by category. It's a great report online. You can see all the trust fund categories, and you can see that this is in the General Fund, the Art Center, rather than in the Contributions Fund. I think we have a right to question this, and I really think we have a right to get straightforward answers, and that certainly didn't happen for me. Thank you.
Paula Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paula Johnson. I still live here in Nashua, fifteen Westborne Drive. First of all, I'd like to give my condolences to Bill Toomey's family. He always used to make the point to say hi to me, and what a nice guy he was. I'm sorry that he didn't get to see his retirement. It's really a sad thing. First of all, I'd like to talk about the outdoor dining. I think it's a good compromise, rather than on the street, because I was the one who complained about the barriers and taking away the handicap parking. We have many people on the board that talk about people with disabilities of all kinds, and we didn't even think about that. I had to go to Disabilities Rights Commission. The mayor got a letter, Mr. Cummings got a letter, Risk Management got a letter, and it would have gone further, but unfortunately, that attorney left on maternity leave. When you put barriers out there, and there's not enough parking for people with disability, although Alderman Dowd said, people have a handicap placard, we can park anyplace, but if there's no place to park, then you can't park with a placard or without a placard. And I thought it was horrible, because many people I would see couldn't walk. That's the first thing. The second thing is, you're charging a thousand dollars per space, as I'm reading here. Well, that's all well and good, but businesses should be paying to put the barriers up and take the barriers down. It shouldn't be the responsibility of the residents of this city, and they should maybe be paying more for that spot. I want to make sure that these tables that go on the street need to be ADA compliant, that wheelchairs can get around them on the street. And people might think, well, what is she complaining about? We know, one phone call to the feds, they're going to come in with the Office of Civil Rights. I know about the Office of Civil Rights. They're really good when you need them. The other thing I'm talking, I'd like to talk about is the fields, the fees. I think things were changed from what happened at the last meeting. Well, I-
One minute.
-the last meeting at least was reasonable. I mean, now you're talking for two hours, no lights, twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, two hours of lights. You had, you know, residents, non-residents, fifty dollars, five hundred dollars for lights, no lights, non-residents. I mean, who takes care of these fields? This is, again, what I talked about the last meeting. We don't take care of our buildings. We don't take care of our fields. We don't use it, and the buildings we use, we have no maintenance plan.
Thirty seconds.
So when everything goes bad, we, the taxpayers, have to pay for everything. It's time that we come up with a comprehensive plan for our fields and for our buildings. Thank you.
Kathy Carden Smith.
Good evening. Kathy Carden Smith, Carden Jewelers, one twenty-five Main Street. I haven't been to many of the last meetings. I was on the committee when we first did the barriers, and I felt the compromise was slanted towards the restaurateurs, and I'm glad that they're all doing well. But at the same time, I think we are losing some of the shops. We've lost Glorious Possibilities, and we've lost the New Hampshire League of Craftsman, just in our block alone. Yes, these people were planning on retiring, but they both struggled to sell their businesses for close to two years. So, and a lot of it was impacted by the parking situation. The other thing that I notice, being downtown often, is the dining is not filled on the street in the parking spaces that frequently. Let me clarify. They, the restaurants will sometimes put people in the parking spots, but the tables on the sidewalk are empty. Now, I don't know if that's for a show, that, yes, this is all working, but let's fill the tables on the sidewalk and try and go on the sidewalk maybe a little wider, instead of, again, into the street, into parking spaces that are valuable for the other businesses. I eat downtown a lot. I love all our restaurants. I'm going to say that if you only have restaurants and no shops, it's not going to be a good balance. So again, I'm not all that familiar with the compromise that's been made with the two lanes both ways, but I do still feel that we need to be respectful of the shops, the businesses, other than the restaurants.
One minute.
Even the hairdressers, the barbers, they all are in a big complaining mode on this, because, you know, a gentleman- because, you know, a gentleman comes in on, you know, a Saturday morning to have his haircut. There aren't people eating behind the barriers. There's nothing going on there. They have to find another spot to park. So I think, you know, that's a real valid point, and we have a lot of barbers and, you know, hairdressers and salons.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. The other thing is, now we have, we're going to have the park, which is going to be beautiful down on, you know, the Water Street ramp down the back, but that has, you know, eliminated all those extra spots that were there, and it's going to be, excuse me, it's going to be great green space, and I love the whole idea, but again, I think we could use more parking on the Main Street. And I don't like the ambiance of the barriers, no matter what color we paint them.
Three times out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award, Crown Uniform and Linen Service.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year contract for uniform cleaning services for the Mechanical Division with Crown Uniform and Linen Service in amount not to exceed $11,100. Funding will be through the Department 152 Fire Rescue Fund, General Fund/61, Supplies and Material by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the clerk, please call the rule.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding million-dollar contract, Minuteman Security and Life Safety.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award a contract for construction of the Fire Alarm Upgrades Project with Minuteman Security and Life Safety in the amount of $1,395,000. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, Wastewater 81, Capital Outlay Improvements by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I know that, you know, we spent a lot of money on, on the wastewater plant, and I, I know that we don't have much choice on, on a lot of things because of, you know, it's, you know, regulated by the federal government, and they, you know, have very stringent requirements that we have to comply with, and it's, you know, very important that we, that we do that. But I, I was struck by the, you know, the amount of, you know, $1,395,000 for an alarm system. And I know that, you know, my summary of it is probably oversimplifying it, but I watched the finance committee meeting, and they really, I didn't think there was much of a, an explanation. I'm wondering if, if mayor you would, through you, if you could ask the mayor, would you be willing to just explain to us and the public what, you know, what the, you know, why we need to spend so much money on an alarm system?
Mayor Donchess?
Well, I don't, it's not, I don't know what you're looking at, but it's not an alarm system. So what happened is, and Ms. Photo or Mr. Boucher could explain it in more detail, but the piping throughout the plant is being replaced. So the flow is directed through the sort of what we call the wet weather facility, which is the portion of the plant that is designed to handle the stormwater. And it wasn't going through the normal route through the plant. And there were problems, and there, and there are, within this wet weather facility, there are two big screens that hold, which prevent large items from going further into the system. And these screens, one of them was broken and needed to be fixed immediately, or the whole place might shut down. So I don't, I don't know about the alarm system, but maybe there was something part of it. But I, I have not heard of the alarm system at all. So the idea was, we really need to keep the plant operating, and this was necessary to do that. Now, if it would help, I could have Ms. Photo and/or Mr. Boucher come in like next time and give you a further explanation, more technical, but it was a, it was a dire situation.
Alderman Jettie.
And there's another one coming, not as big as this, but these, you know, this, there have been breakdowns within this wet weather facility.
Alderman Jettie.
Well, thank you, thank you for that. So, you know, when you say you don't know where I'm coming up with fire alarm, it says award a contract for construction of the Fire Alarm Upgrades Project with Minuteman Security and Life Safety. That's why I...
No, I don't know what you're looking at, though.
I'm looking at the title of the resolution that we're voting on.
Oh, I thought you were asking me about an emergency repair. Oh, I thought you were asking me about emerg, I thought you were asking me about an emergency repair that we authorized. This is something that hasn't passed yet?
Correct.
Oh, well, you're going to have to get it from elsewhere, because I'm not sure. I thought there was an emergency repair for $1 million that we approved at the finance committee, and my mind was on that, and I'm thinking you're asking about that. But in terms of this proposal, we're going to have to get the detail from the professionals, and it's, it's not going to be voted on, as I understand it. So, no, we're voting on it.
We're voting on it.
Okay.
The communication we're accepting is...
Yeah. It's before us now to vote on, ma'am.
I don't think it's correct. It's not an alarm system. I mean, Mr. Boucher was at finance, and they, and we approved it, and he explained it, and it was not, it had nothing to do with an alarm. I don't know why it says that.
Type of, move the table.
So I don't know why it says that either, but...
I wouldn't approve a million dollars on an alarm system.
Okay, Alderman Moran, did you want to withdraw your motion?
Given the concerns of my colleague from War Five, yes, I would like to move to table.
Motion is to table. Did the clerk call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Now, I'm looking at this, and we did an emergency repair for like $1,39,000, and I was thinking that's what this is. This, I'm not sure of.
Okay, so that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchess regarding multi-year contract award, Wright Pierce.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year, three-year on-call engineering contract with Wright Pierce. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, Wastewater 53 Professional and Technical Services by roll call.
You've heard that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none with the clerk, call the rule.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Cable Television Advisory Board, Cole Morgan, reappointment, term to expire March 31st, 2027. Lock Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Nashua Airport Authority, Jessica Holland, reappointment, term to expire December 31st, 2029. 34 Franklin Street, number 442, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Trustee of the trust funds and capital reserve funds, David Fredette, term to expire March 1st, 2027. 4 Henry Drive, number 408, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Kristen Kane, term to expire February 1st, 2027. 14 Wood Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. 201 Main Street Real Estate Corp., Deb Novanti, reappointment, term to expire December 31st, 2028. 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Rich Lannan, reappointment, term to expire December 31st, 2028. 11 McGrath Road, Pal, New Hampshire, 03076. William Berry, reappointment, term to expire December 31st, 2028. 161 Kinsley Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Without objection, I would like to suspend the rules to allow for additional appointments by the mayor that were inadvertently omitted from the agenda.
201 Main Street Financing Corp., Deb Novanti, reappointment, term to expire December 31st, 2028. 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Rich Lannan, reappointment, term to expire December 31st, 2028. 11 McGrath Road, Pal, New Hampshire, 03076.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 11th, 2024 joint meeting, Board of Police Commissioners and Committee on Infrastructure, be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 16th, 2024 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 17th, 2024 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 18th, 2024 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Joshua J. Nahili, 10 Roderick Circle Nashua, with a term to expire September 11th, 2027, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Alderman Moran.
Madam President, I object, but that's, as far as I'm going to go today, I believe the work has been done in Personnel Administrative Affairs, and I look forward to a member joining the ZBA at this point.
Duly noted. Mr. Nahili, would you come forward for the oath of office, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment for the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Board of Health.
Term to expire December 31st, 2025. Candidates, Henry J. Alch, 77 Northeastern Boulevard, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Francis Nutter Upham, 3 Fulton Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Wanda Lanigan, 48 Donovan Court, Merrimack, New Hampshire, 03054.
I will open the floor up for nominations on the election of the vacant member to the Board of Health. Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I nominate Henry Alch. Reason for this nomination, the Board of Health think he's a good candidate, not that the other ones aren't, but I nominate him for this position.
Thank you. Other nominations? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I nominate Wanda Lanigan, 48 Donovan Court, Merrimack, New Hampshire, to the Board of Health.
Other nominations? Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and I will nominate Francis Nutter Upham, 3 Fulton Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060, to the Board of Health.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
Some oaths.
Alderman Govea, thank you. Oh, has to be done by roll call. So would the clerk, please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Sennett.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Thank you. I'm not sure how we're going to do this. Do I need to go around the room like we do for the...
Clerk should call the rule. Each member should name the candidate whom they're voting, and keep going until someone gets each vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
A point of, though, it does say on our agenda for discussion on the motion. When we get, the motion now before us is the election of blank as a member of the Board of Health for assuing term by roll call. Any discussion on that motion? Can we discuss it?
We can. Alderman Moran.
Thank you. I too concur with my colleague at large to my left that each and every one of the candidates in front of us is more than qualified to sit on the Board of Health. They're all healthcare professionals, and I am, I would hope that, at the end of the day, that no matter how you vote, you made the right decision, no matter who prevails. Every single person on this that put their name forward to, for this opportunity is going to be for the betterment of Nashua, and that's, we'll leave it at that.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, just a point of order, Madam President. I don't ever remember doing anything like this. Usually this goes, you know, into another committee, so these people...
It's already been in the committee.
So it's already been to the committee. These are the same, these are the names that are recommended.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to know, okay.
Anything further? Alderman Kelly.
Ms. Alderman O'Brien, I just wanted to, it went through my committee. We interviewed all three and asked all of them the same questions, and we had a very good discussion, so. We have great, we have great candidates in front of us.
Oh, I, I believe you, and I thank you for that. I was just probably getting helicopter rides at the time.
I think you were.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to thank all the candidates for putting their name forward, particularly when there's going to be only one person voted on. It's kind of a lot to have, to look at each other and be like, this is me. I think I'm the best candidate, but you guys are great, too. So that's nerve-wracking to do that live in front of camera and a bunch of aldermen. And Alderman Kelly's committee was very well attended, so I wanted to thank them for putting their names forward, and then remind the public that next election, there will be a ballot item as to whether we want to expand the Board of Health from three to five. This election is essentially because two isn't enough to really effectively run things for long. If somebody gets sick or something happens, we're running, we could be looking at struggling to make quorum. So I think the ballot item, should the people of Nashua choose to vote in favor of it, will increase our redundancy. It will add to our ability to bring in different perspectives, and some of these candidates may have another chance at joining the board at that point.
Anything further? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Just another point of order, we're voting just for one?
Correct.
Okay. I vote for Francis Nutter Upham.
Alderman Timmons.
I vote for Henry Och.
Alderman Moran.
I vote for Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Thibodeau.
I vote for Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Govea.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Lopez.
Francis Nutter Upham.
Alderman Sullivan.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Clemmons.
Francis Nutter Upham.
Alderman Senate.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Jettie.
Henry Och.
Alderman Tebow.
Henry Och.
Alderman Cle.
Henry Och.
Alderman Dowd.
Francis Nutter Upham.
Alderman Kelly.
Henry Och.
Alderman Wilshire.
Henry Och.
There are six votes for Henry Och, five for Wanda Lanigan, and four for Francis Nutter Upham.
Okay. So we need eight votes. We need to just revote to finish the process? Just keep going around until we have a vote?
Could we have a vote? Do we maybe focus on the two?
We can discuss it. Alderman Clemmons.
We can discuss this, correct? Again?
Sure, we can discuss this again. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So I put in the nomination for Francis Nutter Upham. I do believe that she would be a fantastic candidate for the Board. She's a neighbor. I know that she's done a wonderful job up at the State House on healthcare issues, and that was the reason why I supported her. So I don't know how we resolve this stalemate. I think we're going to have to compromise. I will say that of the candidates, of all of the candidates that we interviewed, I was impressed with Henry Och, in particular his response to my question about the situation with Anthem Healthcare and St. Joe's Hospital. I thought that his approach to that question was the answer that I was looking for. So in the spirit of compromise, and because we need to move the candidate forward and because my candidate got the least amount of votes, I will put my support behind Henry Och.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to explain why I voted the way I did. I fully respect Representative Nutter, and she was the person that, when the three of them walked into the room, was the one that I originally wanted to support. And I wanted to support her because I've known her, I was her colleague up in the State House, and I found her to be an amazing person. And so it was between her and Henry Och. I went for Mr. Och simply because of his answers to one question, and the one question was that Chairwoman Kelly had asked, and that was his experience and knowledge about the Board. He answered the question, in my opinion, the best, and he had said that he had attended the meetings, he had been active through COVID with the Board, and he had an in-depth knowledge. Fran had said that she could learn on the fly, and there's no doubt in my mind, there is no one better who could learn on the fly. I know her, her knowledge, her expertise to learn anything, but I would want someone who could hit the ground running, which is why I went with Mr. Och. Right now, there's only a three-board. I hope when it comes to if five members become on, I hope she will come to that board and will run again and throw her name into the, because she will have my support. So I hope those that voted for Fran or for Wanda will come to Mr. Och and support his nomination, so thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. As we've heard about the proposed charter amendment, if approved by the voters, we would be seeing someone like Francis Nutter Upham, who's a mental health counselor, social worker, and then we will also be seeing someone like Wanda Lanigan, who's an advanced practice registered nurse. And I think if the community, the voters decide, we have our candidates. I won't be here, but we have our candidates to fill those two positions, and with that, I urge my colleagues to vote for Henry Och.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. For what was mentioned by Alderman Cle, I had worked with Francis Nutter Upham up at the State House, found her to be an outstanding individual, truly dedicated to Nashua and everything else. But not to turn this into, you know, any longer. I hope Ms. Nutter Upham understands why I am going to change my vote to Henry Och like Alderman Clemmons did, just to kind of expedite this process. I strongly encourage her to continue, perhaps maybe in the future. You know, it's a name that with myself will not be forgotten, and I thank you for your comment service. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll again?
Alderman O'Brien.
Henry J. Och.
Alderman Timmons.
Henry J. Och.
Alderman Moran.
Henry J. Och.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Govea.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Lopez.
Henry Och.
Alderman Sullivan.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Clemmons.
Henry Och.
Alderman Senate.
Wanda Lanigan.
Alderman Jettie.
Henry Och.
Alderman Tebow.
Henry Och.
Alderman Cle. Alderman Cle.
My apologies, Henry Och.
Alderman Dowd.
Henry J. Och.
Alderman Kelly.
Henry Och.
Alderman Wilshire.
Henry Och.
Eleven votes for Henry Och, four votes for Wanda Lanigan.
That motion carries, and Henry Och. Oh, wait a minute. That motion carries for Henry Och. The motion now before the Board is on the election of Henry Och as member of the Board of Health for the ensuing term by roll call.
We just said that.
We don't need that. Okay, he got elected. Okay. The motion before us now is on the election. Why is that on here twice?
Swearing in.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, because there were three candidates?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
In fairness, it is written like four times.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Henry Och with a term to expire December 31st, 2025, to the Board of Health. Would you please come forward for the oath of office?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of Health of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God? Thank you.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Sherri Dutzy, 18 Swart Terrace, Nashville, with a term to expire January 1st, 2028, to the Conservation Commission. I don't see her here this evening. She will be sworn in at a later date.
Environment and Energy Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointments of Adrian George, 7 Indian Fern Drive, Nashville, with a term to expire October 31st, 2027, and Michael Turcot, 385 Woodcrest Court, Manchester, with a term to expire January 7th, 2028, to the Environment and Energy Committee. I don't see Adrian, it is Mr. Turcot here this evening.
I don't see him.
Don't see him? Okay. The oath of office will be administered at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
None.
Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-24-036 amended relative to seasonal road closures and elimination of certain on-street parking for extended outdoor dining and other non-vehicular use.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend O-2436 by replacing it with Goldenrod Coffee. Proposed amendments made at the Committee of Infrastructure by roll call, and I would like to speak to that.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned in his comments this morning, or this evening, the barrier program has been a, in my opinion, has been a success in downtown Nashua. And, you know, some folks asked why originally the barrier program, why it went into the second lane. And if we all remember back to 2020, we had to do social distancing. So you couldn't have a table next to somebody, they had to be six feet apart from one another, right? So the idea behind it was it gave a lot of space to these restaurants to be able to do that and operate as they normally would. It was successful. The side benefit to that was that, you know, we had, we slowed traffic down a little bit on Main Street, which some people liked, became a little bit more pedestrian-friendly, which some people liked. But as time went on, people grew tired of it, and, you know, some folks just wanted those two lanes of traffic back, and they're happy, and some folks just wanted to go away altogether for various reasons. I feel that you, we would be doing ourselves a disservice by eliminating the program altogether. So for the economic benefit that the mayor had pointed out in his comments earlier. So what this does is it basically allows two lanes of traffic in either direction, and on the side streets allows the, for the same setup that we've had in years past. I think this is a perfect compromise that really tries to get to the heart of what people complain about the most, which is the reduced lanes. And, you know, I think that this will hopefully bring this program into perpetuity such that we can end this debate tonight, moving forward, by keeping this program in place. And that's also what this amendment does. It gives some stability to the restaurants so that they know that they can count on this happening year after year. It does not preclude the Board of Aldermen from reviewing it in the future. It does not preclude the Board of Aldermen from submitting legislation to get rid of it in the future if we wanted to. But it does give the downtown business owners a sense of permanence and that, you know, we're not going to constantly go through review after review. And I apologize because my voice is, I'm fighting a cold. So I hope that in the spirit of compromise, the majority of this board will go along with this, and we can put this in our past, but keep it as something that will be well into our future.
Excuse me, Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, give me a few minutes because I only want to speak once on this issue. So this, as this issue in general has become political, I think, almost like, as somebody would say, maybe a political football. Last week, you know, we had a person speak that had run for mayor, say that this was the number-two issue in the city. Number-two. I hate to talk to the unsheltered and the homeless and say this was number-two after taxes, or anybody looking for housing in Nashua, or opioid addiction in Nashua. I would think at least those three, and there's probably others, that would be ahead of this issue. So I don't think this is the number-two issue in Nashua. The other piece of it, people who spoke last week and are sending us emails, and by the way, I'm getting emails from both sides now since we had the meeting last week. I'm getting just as many emails in Ward 8 that say the barriers are a good thing and they like extended dining, as I'm getting, especially in Ward 8, as I'm getting people that say they don't want them. People who still want this, who didn't want this, but now are okay with the compromise, were saying things about the cost or the parking spaces. Well, if all the same restaurants take this amendment, still going to be no parking spaces in their minds, and there's still going to be a cost of, whether it's $43,000 or $200,000, probably more somewhere in between, somewhere than both of those. That's still going to be there. Those things aren't going away. The only difference in this compromise really is the lanes of traffic. And we heard from police and fire, and they said there's no problems for them. Now, there is, I admit, there's probably a 10, maybe a 20-minute extra on some days to get up through Main Street, so I understand that piece of it. I'm not advocating, I wasn't advocating for outdoor dining because I'm an outdoor diner. I'm not. I like air conditioning, and I like heat, but I don't like heat outside, and I don't like air conditioning outside. So I don't eat outdoors, and I don't eat downtown that often. I'm over in Ward 8. I try to give, you know, Daniel Whipps the Highway some of my business so that they can get some love, too. But I do eat, you know, occasionally I eat down there. But, so, I want to make sure, and, you know, somebody had spoke earlier about ADA accessibility. Well, Dan Hudson spoke last week and said, if we do this plan, there's no ramps. So where's the ADA accessibility? Hopefully, he can figure out something as, you know, if this passes, that we can do something on that. And I do get that the restaurants aren't as frequented as they were in the past sometimes. I mean, I'm afraid that downtown, I mean, there's no real lunch crowd except for a few places because restaurants aren't open. Sale of actual physical goods downtown just doesn't work anymore, and it's not just because of downtown dining, it's because of online. That started with internet, right, and online, and eBay, and Amazon, and all that. That started a while ago. So physical businesses, where they're selling a product, just doesn't work downtown. Barber shops work, lawyers, different things like that work. So I get that, and I want to see more, and to Dr. Hannah and others, I want to see development in a way that brings people downtown all the time, not just at night. But that doesn't change whether the barriers are there or not, in my opinion. So I've talked to a few people about this... So, I've talked to a few people about this after my comments last week where I said I would not support this, and I might even make amendments to make it even harder. I've decided reluctantly to support this compromise in the spirit of compromise. But that doesn't go against that there's still some problems with it that, whether it's cost or whether it's parking spaces, those problems still exist. ADA accessibility still exists. So, that's my thoughts on it. I will support it reluctantly. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I had more of just an informational query through you to the maker of the motion. Looking at the Goldenrod copy, it looks like we're including Pearl Streets, Temple Street, and Factory Street. I pulled up the plan as it was originally presented, and, and I apologize in advance, this is something I should have asked in committee, but it just sort of came to me over the past week or so. Looking at Factory Street in particular, the only lane closure and usage on that street that I'm aware of is the, um, the closure of the left-hand lane to generate 14 additional parking spaces. Is that the intent with this, um, with this proposed amendment? Or is there some sort of vision for maybe a tail spinner to utilize this if interested? Or is that maybe an item that we could potentially remove from this?
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the previous speaker for asking the question. No, the intent was to keep that as parking spaces on that particular street. Now, whether or not, you know, that happens because of the construction that's going on, on the ramp, you know, I, I don't know whether or not we would be able to do that this next year, but that was the intent, was at least to keep that design. I suppose if the tail spinner was interested in getting the equivalent of two parking spaces, considering there isn't one there, we could probably do that, but it would have to come through on the, the way that you amend this through the Committee on Infrastructure, which is further down. I wouldn't recommend making any changes to this because I think, in my opinion, the, it was a pretty good design. I, I like parking in those spots, in particular on Factory Street. I think it's usually not too many people there. It's a pretty nice place to park. Now there will be because I said that. But, um, but anyway, yes, that was the plan to, to continue that.
You'll set, Alderman Senate? All set?
Yes, thank you. I apologize.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the things I want to reiterate about this plan is the, the word stability. I think one of the, the comments that Director Hanham made when she was speaking about, and that the, the public keeps picking up that the restaurants don't want this. And I think what Director Hanham kept alluding to was that the, the restaurants are tired of us changing our mind or not making a definitive plan. This, you know, we're going to go for two years, we're going to go for three years. And one of the things that this plan does is it gives us stability. It says, "We've made up our mind, this is what we're going to do." It doesn't lock the restaurants, nor does it really lock the Board of Aldermen into anything in particular, but it says, "This is what we want to do going forward. We're going to keep the two lanes open so there's a flow of traffic." Even though police and fire and rescue said there have been no delays, there have been no issues, they haven't had anything. We are listening to the public. The public are saying, "We're being delayed." Even though the public said, "We're using the excuse of fire and police," they said there weren't any. But we're hearing the public think, "We're being delayed." So, we're listening. And we said, "Okay, you don't want to be delayed. We want you to move forward. We're giving you your four lanes." Or, as Alderman Jettic often says, five or six lanes because of the turn lanes. But we're giving you your four lanes of traffic through. So, we're giving you that. But at the same time, we're allowing some extended dining. Yes, I don't like the way the barriers are going, but maybe as time goes on, maybe different types of barriers can come forward. But for now, we're going to use these, these barriers. It's still going to allow for some, some parking on Main Street. The handicap parking will, will come back, or it'll be a little easier. We won't necessarily have to have that 15-minute or 10-minute parking. But we'll be able to have the parking that are going to do. I've been hearing from some of the restaurants that, yes, they're okay with this. Would they prefer to have the way it was? Yes, they would. But will they accept this? Yes, they will. They're not going to cut their nose off to spite their face. They're going to want to, they're going to want to go with this. They'll pay the, they'll pay the fee from what I've been, from what I've been hearing. And, and we'll, we'll deal with the ADA accessibility. The ones on the sidewalks as they exist now, we'll all have the ADA accessibility as it exists now. So, we'll, we'll have that, that, that ability. I'm, I'm hoping that Engineer Hudson will be able to modify the ramps so we'll be able to do it as it, as it's, as, so that they'll be able to do it on the street. But we know that the ones that are on the sidewalk will have all the AD, ADA accessibility as it exists currently. So we will have ADA accessible tables. We're going to work with this. I think this is a great compromise. Those that don't want it aren't going to like it anyways. And I'll bet you many of those don't even come downtown. So, I, I think this is a compromise. I think it's a way forward. Remember always, no board can hold future boards' hands. In two years, can the board, the next board stop it? Yes, they can. Will they? I hope not. I think Alderman Clemens' compromise is a good compromise, and I hope everybody will support it. I think it's a way forward, and it keeps it going and moving forward because the master plan talks about this. And I think it gives us time to move those side streets the way we want to change it, the way we want to change West Pearl, the way we talk about changing Spring Street and, and Walnut and, and all of these other streets. So, let's just continue this. It kind of gives us the flavor. And definitely keep those side streets, keep them open the way we're talking about it. So, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a show of hands. Anyone from the restaurants here today? I think I see one. Alderman Sullivan, I win. Thank you. Sorry. But I would like to talk about this amendment compromise. I love it. I think some people may have been surprised about how I entered this meeting today. You know, it could have been a whole different type of conversation. But I hear the word compromise, and I settle down. There's no need to keep digging in when you don't have to. So, when, and this is exactly what this change does for the downtown dining. And whether you're against two lanes of traffic, one, four lanes of traffic, giving it all to the restaurants, taking some back, I think this is at least another step in the right direction to see if there is future buy-in from the restaurants. And I frequent the restaurants downtown all the time. I was at Martha's on Saturday. I have my annual company Christmas party at Martha's every year. We, I was at Surf last week. I'm probably at least once a week eating downtown. And so I value the work that they do there. But at a certain point, there are the other businesses. The pandemic is over. I am now seeing more and more restaurants, including very fine dining Surf on, on DoorDash, which that was surprising. So there's other opportunities, is what I'm saying, for businesses to make up the loss of these extra spaces that they might not be getting and cut down. So I do appreciate Alderman Clemens coming forward with this. I will support it. I probably would have supported Alderman, my Alderman, my colleague from Ward Eight's amendment if he had made it. But I think this is a good way to move, move on and get to more, a different city business.
Alderman Lopez.
So, as an Alderman for downtown, I know there's a lot of different competing voices in downtown. There's different businesses with different functions, and that is largely what makes downtown work. I do think there are some voices that generally are overrepresented in some ways and generally represent themselves as speaking for everybody. But that's a navigation and discernment that I think we've been making for years. Absent from the, from the comments that are made by people who are opposed to outdoor dining is any acknowledgement of past compromises. Whether we remove parking specifically on the streets that are the most vocal about it, up to where it started to really affect a restaurant that did need it, whether it was where we compressed the time of year. We review this every year, and we try to tweak it and fine-tune it every year to the point where, you know, last year, the year before last, actually, we added, "You have to check with the owners of all of the properties and make sure that they're involved, too." We have been compromising, and we have been listening, and we have been trying to navigate this. And at the end of the day, this wasn't pitched as just a, a solving the COVID-19 epidemic issue. It was presented as an opportunity to improve downtown, to introduce traffic calming, which every police report says is necessary. There's a number of high-speed drivers running up and down Main Street. There have been a number of pedestrian accidents. We've been investing a lot of money into midpoint crossings to do the same thing. Slowing downtown, or slowing the traffic down on Main Street is undesirable to many who just want to go through Main Street to get to where they're going. But it is a necessary safety issue, and it is an economic driver. And, I mean, that's been supported many, many different ways, whether it was having interns watching who was using it or whether it was using place or AI. Where, or even when people are making public comment and saying, "Well, all these businesses, these restaurants, they're living off the extra business." Well, then I guess there is extra business. I can say, as someone who is very regularly downtown, I probably do eat out downtown, even in the middle of the winter, three or four times a week, if not, you know, in the summer and the spring, in the outdoor dining area, pretty regularly. And I, I'm not the only one sitting there. There's plenty of other places, and there's a lot of other restaurants that invest and put work into decorating and, you know, organizing that area out there, putting live performances, and that adds value to our downtown economy. I have yet to hear any of the brick-and-mortar commercial stores, you know, ever suggest using that area, you know, to do pop-up events or activities. We did actually make a suggestion, I think, a couple of years ago, that barbers might be able to figure out how to do that. There hasn't been any movement from that particular population, but restaurant owners have invested in this. And they've come and they've spoken before the board, and, you know, they've been part of larger compromises. So, I think this is a good one. I think it's a necessary one. I think, as was mentioned by one of my previous colleagues, it does speak to a larger need for economic development and community development to develop an actual plan for managing Main Street and, you know, adjusting the curb cuts. Because if we were able to offer an option where soon we would be able to redesign the sidewalks to allow for more parking, then a lot of that, those concerns might be ameliorated if people had parking right in front of their restaurant and weren't losing that. I think the debate largely has been about the parking versus the outdoor dining. There's definitely plenty of people who want to go faster down Main Street and want to have two lanes to do it. But I don't think that's necessarily a good thing, and I think we've had consistent road studies and safety evaluations to kind of demonstrate that. So, I will definitely support the amendment. I think if I'd been on the committee, I might have argued not to even do it because I think making sure that this is, we're investing enough to make sure it's viable for businesses is important. But it's, the committee did the work, and I respect the, the work that they did. And I will support this because I think it's the best way to support everybody downtown rather than the voices of people who don't recognize compromise.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question through you to Corporation Counsel, if I can.
You can.
So, looking at the amendment in front of us right now, so we heard at the committee level that this wasn't ADA compliant. I guess my, my bigger question is, we can do that? We can go around what the ADA requires for this type of seating?
I don't know that it's non-ADA compliant. I walk on Main Street virtually every day. At every intersection, I see that there is a way that wheeled vehicles, wheelchairs, whatnot, can, can access the sidewalk from the street level. As far as I know, that is ADA compliant. Now, yes, you, if we are not ADA compliant, we're probably running afoul of federal regulations. But my general understanding is we don't have to be 100% compliant every minute of every day. We have to provide appropriate opportunities. I think that is being done. Main Street sidewalks are much more amenable to persons in wheelchairs and, and other, other ambulatory, persons with other ambulatory issues than most of the sidewalks in town. In front of my house, I think I can walk for miles without seeing any curbs that tip down to allow for wheelchairs. So if we're not ADA compliant on Main Street, we're probably not anywhere in the city. And I think over time, that probably will get better. And I think that's what the federal government is looking for, not immediate compliance everywhere all at once.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to allow Liz Hanham, Director Hanham, to weigh in. Director Hanham?
Thank you. Liz Hanham, Economic Development Director. Sorry I can't be there in person today, but I just want to provide a quick answer to that ADA accessible issue. The, we are not required to create the ADA accessible issues on the, the, in the parking spaces because we have the sidewalk seating available. We have been providing ADA accessibility with DPW's ramps. Those ramps will no longer fit in the amended proposal. So we cannot, we cannot, as the city, provide that. However, we will be working with the restaurants to see, to help them figure out if they would like to create ramps of their own to try to get into that space. But because we have two spaces, available sidewalk and the extended outdoor dining, I, I think we're, we are in compliance. The other thing I mentioned, or I heard from the community during public comments was that there aren't accessible parking spaces, and we are required by law to replace anything that we take up with this outdoor dining. So, and we have to have it on the block face. So, it's eight to 20 feet away, the, the new parking, handicap parking spaces. So, that is not an issue either.
Thank you. Next, I have Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. And I appreciate Director Ham. A lot of people think that I have an onus to the sidewalk, sidewalk dining. I don't. It was handed to us years ago in our committee. We worked very, very hard to try to make it work. Okay. And one of the things the restaurant business said was, basically, if this gets allowed, I don't want you guys to be changing it. And here we are again, changing it again. So, I don't know. The accusation made, not enough handicap parking. We just couldn't do that. Every single spot that was designated existed with the, with the barriers. And if you remember, they made a little cutout so people could use it. So we didn't lose one handicap spot. And it seems like this whole thing, a negativity to the barriers. The police can't get down the street, this can't get down. There, there was a whole bunch of fiction that was supplied with this. And so, in looking at it, again, I don't take any ownership with this, but there was concerns that nobody has really mentioned yet, the 10-year plan. This could have an effect on the 10-year plan. Now, it is a fluid document as we sit right now, and maybe we can make the adjustments and work on that. So, we, we shall see. So we shall see what's up. But I did happen to enjoy outdoor dining. The wife was kind of Mets-a-mets on it. I like people watching. Always the best. Best sport in the world, you know? So you could do that with outdoor dining and, so enough said. There was an attempt here in the spirit of compromise. If it rings a depth hole to outdoor dining, maybe we can readjust it at a future point. I don't know who would want to go. We had limited space to begin with. Take a couple more feet away, I think we're going to have some particular issues. Case in point, we can't use our existing BPW ramps. They'll smack into the wall. And if the barrier wasn't there, they'll roll out in the middle of the street. So we can't have that. So it's going to take, again, to say it's done. But the second thing that is the most important thing, we hear it all the time, all the taxes, all this, all that. Here was an opportunity that the city, allegedly with the mayor's numbers and Liz's numbers, have said how much this was worth to the city in revenue. That's all gone as it sits right now. So if one store does not participate, that's a loss on those particular numbers. But in the spirit of compromise, I will not stand in the way of this. I'll go with the flavor of my committee and support my committee as a chair does, supposed to do. And I'll vote for the compromise. So thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I guess, you know, just listening to the room, it sounds like I'll offer a dissenting opinion, which I feel that I'm obligated to do. But also, before I get to that, just expand a little bit on what Alderman Moran said. We had a friendly bet after the infrastructure meeting because it was comment, it was, there were comments made at the infrastructure committee, the lack of restaurants that showed up to speak in favor of it. And a lot of people were surprised. And I said, well, I bet you they watch it and I bet you more than two show up. And I said, I bet you a quarter. He was right, I was wrong. And it sounds like I'll be on the losing side of this vote tonight. However, I will be happy that this ordinance is going to go, one is going to go one way or the other. We're going to be done with it. So I'm happy about that and we can get on with it. For me, it's an easy decision. I read my emails, I have my conversations. It is clear to me that for whatever reason, traffic congestion, cost, or whatever, the public that I speak with is not in favor of this program. So I think that it's a program overall that benefits few, that aggravates many. And for that reason, I'm going to vote against it.
Alderwoman Timmons.
I didn't have my hand up, but I will say something. I'm going to support this amendment. One, I, I'm at large and I hear from a lot of people and I'm always downtown. So I hear from many as well. And they like the beer, they like eating downtown, they like the barriers. So we talking about one ward, I'm talking about the city. And from my constituents, which I hear from as well, want those barriers. They like eating downtown. So I'm going to support the compromise, even though my constituents said they don't like the compromise, they like the barriers. So I'm, I'm just saying, since you asked me, I'm going to support the amendment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'm, I'm torn and I will say I'm reluctantly leaning towards supporting this. But I've, I've talked about it at, at the infrastructure committee. I've talked about, you know, my concerns as someone who was a small business owner when this happened in downtown. And I did see the traffic congestion and I, you know, I, I did have to walk around as someone on crutches, walk around certain areas because of it. So I know that some of the things that people bring up who are against this do exist. But I've also sat out at Surf on a beautiful summer day with my family and been able to sit out there because they have the expanded space and really enjoy that. So I'm going to reluctantly support, but I do still have concerns.
Anyone else? Motion is to amend. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Juddy.
Yes.
Alderman Tevo.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, two nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of vote 2436 as amended by roll call.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Alderman Juddy.
Thank you. So I voted for the amendment because I thought it was better than the original ordinance that was before us. But I, I'm going to vote against this now because, you know, I, I was on the committee, the infrastructure committee when we were first, we first dealt with this back when, during COVID. And, you know, it was a, you know, but for those of you who may, may not remember, and forgive those who do, forgive me for repeating it. But this was first proposed as a way of allowing our restaurants to survive during COVID when, when the state ordered or forbade restaurants from seating people indoors. And so in order to allow restaurants to serve people at all, they had to do it outdoors. And, you know, some of them had the capacity to do that on the sidewalks, but it was not enough for them. So, so, you know, the, the community development department came up with the idea of using the streets, the parking places in the streets to allow for the restaurants to set up tables and to serve people and to survive. And, you know, at the time, you know, we, you know, we have not only restaurants downtown, we also have retail stores. And the retailers supported this because, you know, they felt that they were, you know, that they were part of a unified, you know, downtown merchant group. And they were, you know, supporting their, you know, the restaurateurs in order to help them get through COVID. And, you know, after the ban on indoor dining was lifted, we continued this, you know, because the restaurants told us, you know, that, that they had suffered losses during COVID. And they still needed, you know, more tables in the streets in order to, to make up for that, to survive. And so, so we continued it. And then, you know, the whole issue that community development, you know, raised, you know, about the, the long-range plan for Main Street to, to expand the sidewalks, to, you know, reduce the travel lanes. You know, it was a different vision for, for Main Street. And they thought, well, while we're accommodating the restaurants in response to COVID, you know, we get this other opportunity to train people to, you know, try out this narrowed Main Street to see whether or not that, that would work, whether it would handle the traffic sufficiently that it was possible for the long-range plan. And, and also get, you know, people used to the idea. And, you know, the, you know, the argument was made, you know, Main Street should not be a thoroughfare. Main Street should be a destination. And one way of accomplishing that is to, you know, reduce the flow of traffic or at least reduce the speed. You know, that Main Street should not be a place to get from, you know, north to south or south to north as quickly as possible. You know, it should be a place, a destination for people to come to. And, you know, maybe the slower traffic, people would, you know, have a chance to see what's on Main Street and maybe, you know, return and frequent the retail shops as well as the restaurants. And the idea was, you know, these, you know, these barriers, you know, aesthetics aside, you know, were a temporary measure in that we would, you know, be eventually, you know, widening the sidewalks and, and, you know, making permanent structural changes to, to Main Street. So, you know, time has gone on and, you know, we, we are not, you know, most of COVID is behind us, but not completely. You know, COVID is still around, people are still getting COVID. So, you know, the whole, you know, the whole purpose of, you know, allowing people to, you know, to, to, you know, socially distance and stay away from one another, especially during the wintertime, you know, still has merit. But as far as this, this program is concerned, you know, the, the compromise plan, I like the compromise plan because it, you know, it, it provides, you know, for more capacity on Main Street. During the committee meeting, I talked about, you know, the problem of people from side streets getting onto Main Street, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the problem of gridlock. You know, I, I heard, you know, the, you know, the fire department say that, you know, they can manage it. I heard the police department say they can manage it. I heard the Department of Public Works, the traffic engineer say, you know, that, that they could manage it. But I'm sitting here saying, you know, do I, you know, do I believe these people and I respect these people? I, I know that they're, they're doing, you know, they're not trying to hide information from us. But I'm reminded of, of an old country song and, you know, is, you know, are you, are you going to, you know, believe me or your lying eyes? And, you know, my lying eyes are, I don't think my eyes were lying, but I've, I've witnessed the, the difficulty of traffic moving down Main Street. And allowing these, these additional traffic lanes, I think will, you know, will help, you know, people making turns onto Main Street. It'll, you know, the, the more cars that you can move further, you know, down the road, you know, there'll be more room for make, people to make a turn and get onto Main Street. So I, I like the compromise plan, you know, for that. And I, you know, I think it's better than what we had. But I still think that, you know, the retail people, you know, have cooperated, they've put up with lack of parking. And I think it's time to, you know, re, you know, return, you know, the parking to them. And I think, you know, the, you know, when people talk about, you know, the economic advantage of the out, of the, not the out, not the out, we're not talking about outdoor dining, we're still going to have, no matter what happens, we still have sidewalk dining. But when we're talking about being able to dine or sit, you know, seat, sit in the street, you know, I, I hear what Director Hanem said and the mayor say about the, the AI, the Placer AI information. And, you know, I hear the multiplier being applied to that. But I'm thinking, you know, how much, how much of that, I mean, I, I, I know it does the city good for businesses to succeed and to be making this money. But, you know, when people talk about, for example, the meals and rooms tax, you know, how this generates meals and rooms tax that comes to the city, you know, I want to remind people that that, that that money, that rooms and meals tax money goes to the state. And the state is keeping currently, even though the law says they're supposed to return 70% of it to the cities and towns, they're only returning 20%. I mean, they're supposed to return 30% to the cities and towns. They're only returning 20%. And every time there's a shortfall in the state and we're reading about the state suffering a shortfall, you know, the state sends less money to the cities and towns. That's why the rooms and meals was originally, they were supposed to return 40% to the cities and towns. They changed to 30% because they needed the money. And then, in fact, they're only sending 20% because they needed the money. And I, I bet you that they're going to solve the budget problem by returning even less to the cities and towns. And all, all of that money that comes from Nashville doesn't come back to Nashville. And all of that money is not generated, that comes from Nashville is not generated by Main Street. It's generated on Amherst Street and Danny Webster Highway. You know, also Main Street, but those other places as well. What I do know, the numbers that we do have, that we can be sure of, is that, you know, that it, you know, it's costing money to put the barriers down and to take them up. And, and there's also the, the cost, the, the, the lack of parking revenue and the lack of parking enforcement revenue. So it's costing the city, this program is costing the city money. I don't know if it's made up by the general, you know, economic advantage to, that, that this is doing. But I do know that it's costing the city and the restaurant, you know, if the restaurants, I, I hate to sound like a jerk about this, but if the restaurants are making so much money as a result of this, then they ought to be paying more to, they ought to be paying what it costs to do it. And they're not. So, so I think it's, you know, as, as one, you know, you're a longtime retailer and, you know, there, there are some retail establishments in Nashville that are doing very well. They've been doing well for a long time. You know, they're, they've been the core of downtown. Restaurants have come and gone. These retailers have been there all along. And, you know, as, as one of them said to me, you know, you know, we, you know, we, we did our share, we, we supported the restaurants, but it's time to return the parking to, to Main Street. And, and one of the others spoke here tonight on that issue. So I, you, you probably think I've already belabored the point, so I'll stop here, but I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 2436 as amended by roll call. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I'll belabor the point. I, I have a couple more. I have a couple more questions, if I may. First, through you to Director Hanam. We've had about a week and change since this amendment, at least passed the first step in committee. Have you had the opportunity to gauge any sort of empirical potential buy-in from the restaurants on Main Street and what their appetite for this is, and what, at least, say for season one here in 2025, this might look like?
Director Hanam?
Liz Hanam, Economic Development Director. I have not talked to any of the businesses directly. I'm only working part-time at the moment, unfortunately, but I did send emails through the Downtown Improvement Committee. They are all aware of this happening, and there was no response. I think, as Alderman Klee mentioned, that they're just waiting to hear what's going to happen, and they will act accordingly once you make a decision. That is my impression.
Follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. I did have a question in regard to the fiscal note attached to this. So, I know that the $60,000 a year for the, well, I guess I'll stop there. The fiscal notes in this legislation, are those per year, or are those contemplated on the original three-year proposal?
I believe that that is, let's see, annually. Let me pull up the, so, we are looking at, so, the 2024 costs, hard costs were $57,000 for pickup and drop-off. The revenue was $11,500. We estimate $30,000 to $40,000 in lost parking revenue. And then, we have about $5,000 to $8,000 in estimated parking enforcement revenue. So, between 35,000 and 53,000 in lost revenue total.
And those are per-year costs?
Yes, yes. So, that, sorry, that is real costs and estimated costs from 2024. So, that is one annual cost. So, the total cost is between $80,000 and $95,000, somewhere in there, to the city. Between real costs and potential lost revenue.
All right. Thank you for those responses. I came up with similar numbers. When somebody tells me something is going to be between X and Y, I take the median. And then, when someone gives me an estimated cost, I generally take their word for it. So, using that approach, I came up with $104,000 a year, which is where I'm kind of struggling, just because, again, I like the amendment. The amendment is very rooted in the spirit of compromise, which I think this board was looking for. Bear eye struggle is an ongoing piece of legislation with no finite end, that just using the raw numbers in front of us will say if everybody buys the same amount of spots that they did in the previous year, which they, I imagine they wouldn't be able to with this new proposal, you're looking at income of only $23,000 over an estimated, at least at my estimated cost of $104,000. So, I am struggling with the financial implications of this. I do struggle with some of the information we've been given in terms of the placer AI data. Again, I had mentioned at the committee level that, you know, I was concerned that what I was, or what I was seeing wasn't matching what I was being told. And then, I believe Director Hanam, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was you who had noted, that we're not able to narrow down data using that to determine who's eating inside versus outside.
No, that's not quite right. We are able to see who's eating in the parking spaces and the sidewalk and indoors, but we can't estimate, what we can't do with that data is estimate if people that are eating outdoors would have eaten inside if the outdoors didn't exist. Does that make sense?
Of course, yeah.
So, we can have estimates for who's eating outdoors and who's not, but we can't understand if they would have eaten there anyway.
I guess, then, in that case, that's a piece of data I think I would have liked to have seen as we discussed this in committee. But I will halt my comments there and defer to the remainder of the board. Thank you.
Can I just respond to the comment about the cost?
Yes.
So, I agree that this is kind of a new idea, so we're not really sure how many restaurants are going to participate or not. But if the same number participate, we're looking at about the same costs, but a few less barriers because we don't have to go out as far. So, maybe a few thousand less in costs. But if we do see a reduction in the number of restaurants that are participating, that 105,000, which my estimates is actually, the high-end is 95,000 with all of the high-end, so I'm a little off from your number, but I see it being reduced quite a bit. So, the cost might be in relation to the number of participants, so the revenue and the costs might be relative to what the new project is, and it might stay the same, you know, return on investment, or it might not.
Okay. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. As I said, I'll support as amended. I just want to address one topic about engagement from the downtown restaurants. And I'm glad to see Mike here. Actually, Mike's a gem to the city. He's very involved in the city in Nashua and very valued. I just don't want to undermine that before I say anything that's going to offend people, because it probably will. But I think I mentioned this at the Infrastructure Committee, you know, no one from the restaurants came to talk about whether they liked this or not, and then we heard from Director Hanam that there was like a lack of interest. It's kind of dull, I'm not using her words exactly. And I gave the example to Chairman McCauley at-large about what happens when state laws or local laws impact my business as a business owner. I dragged myself up to Concord, and I testify in front of committees, or I sign a designee. Perfect example, the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee was on those committees that I would testify in front of, and you just don't give up there. So, and I'm going to tell this story because this could have been a perfect example for downtown restaurants. Go up to the State House, testified that the Interstate Compact for Social Workers is a necessity, should be passed. My colleagues committee voted it in X B N to legislate. Oh, no, that's terrible. You don't stop there. You and your fellow hundreds of social workers in New Hampshire call every single legislator in the State House, and we overturn the committee. Went to the Senate, championed by Senator Rosenwald. It was passed, and I have a great picture with Governor Sununu signing that bill into law. If there was passion in downtown for the restaurants to keep the spaces the way they are with the two lanes, they would have been here. If there's not enough passion, enough coming out and saying, this is how my business will be positively or negatively impacted, I can't buy the second-hand reports from other folks. I have to defer to my colleagues' opinion from Ward Five, that you just go with what you see. And the engagement, if we're not seeing it with our own eyes downtown, and we're not seeing it from the owners of the restaurants or their designees here, I just don't see the need to keep it at the two lanes. And that's why the compromise piece is there are some folks that reached out and said they wanted. I've spoken to the side streets, and they are happy the way it is, that they're not going to lose any spots. But I go downtown, and there frequently, no one said, please, please, keep it two lanes. And quite a few restaurants know my Alderman, and it doesn't get brought up. If anything, I bring it up, and they're like, ah, it's all right. Not going to die on their sword for it. So, that's why I appreciate Alderman Clemens, finding compromise between what the city feels like it needs for the downtown, with the restaurants and with others who don't find an interest at all, to some kind of middle ground to see this through. Thanks.
Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in opposition today of O-24-036. I've hashed this out for a couple of years now, so I don't really feel that it's needed for me to go for my viewpoints on it. It's out there. You can find it pretty easily. But I think when I'm looking at it this time and kind of in the long term, I mean, if we're really serious about making parking an enterprise fund, which is a conversation we've had, and ended parking garages with the money we just allocated, the 16 million to renovate both of those, I mean, it looks like we could be going through a tough time with parking before it gets any better. So, I mean, I'll leave it at that. I mean, my thoughts are out there, pretty clear about how I feel about it. My ward has spoken pretty loud and clear to me on how they want me to vote from both residents and business owners, like Ms. Carden, who is not here anymore, but she lives in the ward and has talked to me frequently about just owning a business on Main Street during this time. And I think that's, what's been great about this process and the deliberation we've had on it, is each Alderman's talking about what their ward wants and what they're hearing. It's not just personal preference. We're all going back and actually listening to our constituents, and I think that's really important. And at the end of the day, we're all going to vote to what appeases either our ward or, like our at-large Alderman do, what they're hearing around the full city. So, I think it's a good exercise that we're all listening to the constituents out there. I will not be supporting it tonight, though. Thank you.
Alderman Klee?
Thank you, Madam President. I can agree with what my colleague from Ward One just said. I think we all are listening, and I think we're, many of us are getting mixed reviews. I had equally as many who say don't, equally as many who say do, and equally as many who say, you know, I like it but, or I don't like it but. So, it's kind of a mixed bag. I like the compromise. I was the first person who said, let it die, until I heard the compromise. But I do want to say something about the cost and loss of revenue. I think with this new compromise, I think there's a little less loss of revenue, and I also think with this compromise, I think there's a little less cost. If I'm not mistaken, I think Engineer Hudson made comment that there wouldn't be quite as much cost because we didn't have to shut the road down as much, because we didn't have to shut down a lane of traffic, that there, unlike before where we had to bring in this large company that had to shut down the lane of traffic, and so I'm not, with my mind, I was just trying to go through my notes, I don't think I took accurate enough notes, but I do remember him saying something about that we might be able to do a little bit more on our own and so on, because we didn't have to deal with all that closing down of traffic like we had to before. I don't think we have to do as much as we did. I'm not saying that the city would be doing it. I'm not saying that we wouldn't still be hiring somebody, but I don't think it's going to be as costly and to the point that it was. So, I think there is going to be a little bit of cost savings with this compromise because we don't have to shut down everything like we did before. So, I think everything is going to be a little bit different. I dislike the term that Alderman Dowd uses, but it's an unknown unknown, but in some respects it's not. I think it is a known, the part that's unknown is we don't know who's going to be committed to participating at this point. I think probably the gentlemen that are sitting out there, listening to us, there are probably two that will be participating, but I know that there are others. I know for a fact that there are others that are going to be participating. They just want us to make up our mind and finally sign it and let them know that we are committed, or that we're committed to not doing it. But whatever we do, we finally make a decision and let them know that they can budget or not budget for it, but that we finally made up our minds. So, I hope that we can make a decision and move forward. And with that, I hate to do this, but Madam President, I'd like to move the question.
Motion is to move the question. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
No.
Alderman Thibodeau?
No.
Alderman Goveya?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No, a few people got to make long statements.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
No.
Alderman Senate?
No.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Tebow?
No.
Alderman Klee?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderwoman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Wilshire?
No.
Four gays, eleven nays.
And that motion fails. Alderman Lopez?
So, I will try to be brief, because apparently some people want us to be brief, but I think there's a point we're starting to reach where if compromise is the purpose and the only purpose that matters, and we're starting to compromise with people who don't really intend to compromise, we might need to start looking at whether we're just morally compromised. Because I think if you're going to agree to amendment to a motion that you definitely intend to kill, that's disingenuous. So, I'm still in favor of compromising because I believe in the actual concept of it, and I recognize that there's a lot of different populations at work downtown, but I think a couple of aspects of that might not necessarily be considered. I think it's not my understanding, having also been there when it was first introduced, that it was never intended to be a traffic calming thing. I think we might have pulled on the plan for traffic calming and downtown redesign that we had in order to launch the first version of this. So, I think we can look at costs, and now we're worried about it, because $100,000 is a lot of money. We can resurface three pools when most of the, I don't know, Ward Four doesn't have a pool, because Nashua needs certain amenities. But then, when it comes to making sure we have a vibrant downtown, which we're the first to celebrate every single time, we can't put money in to make sure that we actually have certain businesses operating in a way that's responsible. I find that problematic. I think the investment definitely comes back in its own way. I think the meals and rooms tax quibbling over whether or not all of it comes back ignores the fact that you still have more meals and rooms tax if you are generating more business. And more specifically, these businesses are working and interacting with each other. When people go out to eat, they look at the jewelry store and they remember to go the next time. And often, when people go to the jewelry store, they also go out to eat later. So, I think those are important components. I think that Main Street is an ecosystem, and as a larger demonstration model, I guess, of the community that we have, it has an important role. And while I think it was pointed out that some of the, that we're all listening to our wards, and some of our wards are saying different, I think it's pretty consistent that the people who represent wards further and further away from downtown might have a specific kind of feeling about it. Maybe they're using Main Street to get to their wards and back. So, I think, I hope the at-larges particularly are thinking of the whole city as an aggregate rather than the individuals, because as ward Alderman, we represent our individual populations the best that we can, and our individual populations might have different opinions on a specific geographic area, even though many of other areas, there's many other areas of benefits that benefit the whole city. So, I'm still going to support the original motion. I think the comments, as well-meaning as they were regarding turnout by restaurants, is unfair to them, because we're currently meeting during their operation hours, you know, in the winter, while talking about a program that's in the spring and the summer. So, you don't feel that urgency. But I would point out that I've had more than a few neighborhood watches organized in collaboration with Downtown Improvement Committee, and I've been told I can't have them at a certain time because that's when they're doing business. So, you can't apply one and not the other. I think restaurants have been heard. I think they've shown their support when they pay for the spaces that years ago they were getting, they were getting for free. And I think they work harder than all of us, because they're the ones who are setting up the tables. up the tables, taking them down at night, serving all of their patrons, and making the program work as well as it does. So I will commend the restaurants for all the work that they're doing in trying to be community-oriented and contribute to a larger downtown environment, and I encourage my fellow aldermen to do the same.
Anything further? Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 2436 as amended by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
No.
Alderman Govea?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
No.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie? Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
11 yeas, 4 nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2436 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of O-24-040, amending the ordinances regarding individual sewage disposal systems.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President, for final passage of O-24-040. By roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
15 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2440 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-24-043, amended updating field fees.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend O-24-043 by replacing it with a golden rod copy of proposed amendments made at the Personal Administrative Affairs Committee by roll call, and would like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. The amendment before you changes the effective date. That's all the amendment does. I can go in further about the legislation after we pass this.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons? Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cle, Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
15 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of O-24-043 as amended by roll call, and I would like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. You thought we just had a long debate. Get ready for this one. So the legislation before you amends the field fees for our city fields, and this was done through a small committee, and I definitely want to thank Alderman Thibodeau, who played a very big part in this, Ms. Byers and Ms. Karen from the mayor's office. Us four got together on numerous occasions and looked at surrounding fees from towns in the area, and wanted to come up with a more competitive revenue source for us. Under this proposal, we're looking at $100,000 plus in new revenue coming into the city. That money would be used for renovating and rehabbing our fields. We'll see some more legislation on that and how that money's going to be used at a later date, but today we'll focus on just the fees. So athletic fields with no lights, that's $25 for two hours. Athletic fields with lights is $50 for two hours. These are competitive priced throughout our area. They are now still some of the lowest prices you'll find, but at the same time, we're now up with everybody else. You can look at some of these, what we used to charge and where a lot of the money was used was for these leagues, who would pay a solid price, and they could use the fields as much as they want. I mean, that's just as good of a deal as the landfill permit is in the city. So change that up, move it to two-hour blocks, make it much more easier for the scheduling purposes, bring in more revenue, make our fields better. I'll leave it at that. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I thought the money was going towards barriers. So I want to thank Alderman Govea as well, and Ms. Byers, who's in the crowd, and Director Foto and Megan Karen for working on this. The, I mean, the good news too here is, one thing to mention is that our own leagues, like Little League, Cal Ripken, soccer leagues that are Nashua-specific, they will not be charged for this. So it doesn't impact our own city leagues. So we'll keep that as is. But, you know, being part of these travel teams, you know, they charge a lot of money to kids that play on these teams, and then they get fields here, because, you know, we have a lot of fields. And the fields get trampled on, and they need work, and we just have too many teams on too many fields. So this will help alleviate that while bringing in some more revenue. So I think it's a good deal for the city.
Further discussion. Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I asked some of the youth sports leagues, particularly the soccer clubs, and they generally thought it was actually a good idea. They think it will improve access to the fields in a lot of ways, and they have lead times, so they can figure out how to fundraise for it. So that's all good things. And then just as a follow-up, did my colleague Alderman Thibodeau ever get his extra rake, or does he need to apply to Downtown Improvement Committee for that?
Be part of the $100,000.
Further discussion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons? Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
15 yeas, 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2443 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-25-121, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to establishing a limitation on annual budgets.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to determine that it's necessary to move forward with proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to establishing a limitation on annual budgets by roll call.
I just have a question.
Alderman Moran?
Can we sponsor this now, or do we have to wait till after?
No, I could ask for additional sponsors. Okay. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Senate, Alderman, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle, okay, Alderman Thibodeau, and myself. So the motion is to determine that it's necessary to move forward. Would the clerk call the roll on that, please?
Could I have a question first, please?
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Can you just explain what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, or just the process here?
A yes vote means that you're willing to move this forward.
Meaning it's going to go to committee and then get vetted, and we hear all about that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Does it need to be two-thirds?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay, just, thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
15 yeas, 0 nays.
And that motion carries. This will be assigned to the Personal Administrative Affairs Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen meeting on Monday, February 3, in the Aldermanic Chamber at 7:00 PM.
First reading of R-25-122, authorizing deed waivers for certain properties.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Govea, Alderman Sullivan. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R-25-123, authorizing the mayor to enter into First Amendment to airright lease with Nashua Apartment Ventures LLC.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-25-124, authorizing the mayor to enter into Second Master Development Agreement Amendment with Nashua Apartment Ventures LLC.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-25-125, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2025 relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Cle, Alderman Senate. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-25-045, increasing public comment time limits.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Govea, Alderman Sullivan. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personal Administration Affairs Committee.
Point of order, Madam President. I believe Alderman Senate has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Senate.
First reading of O-25-046, providing information on the tax bill about property evaluations and providing for future notifications of upcoming citywide revaluations.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personal Administrative Affairs Committee. Period public comment. We have two people signed up.
Laurie Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I want to address the presentation that was given regarding trust funds. I found a lot of information, and they're really questionable. I spent an hour nap on the phone with the DRA and with the DOJ about these funds, and had a chance to talk for about 90 minutes with the people who represent Nashua. And the information as far as them really doing detailed reviews and having the time and approving Nashua's paperwork up there, I would differ on that a little bit. The DRA has major limitations with personnel. They've changed how they review the MS-10. And when you're sending up your MS-9 and MS-10, and you're writing a sworn statement essentially on it, that under the penalty of perjury, you're testifying that this was reviewed on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the City Trust Funds, and there isn't one, then you're saying the DOJ approved it. You weren't truthful to them on the form. You led them to believe you had a committee you didn't have. Why is that not an uns sworn, you know, falsification or a perjury charge? So to turn around and say the DOJ had no problem, they've been really happy with what we've sent up, you haven't been truthful with them. So, and that's what I've discussed with them. How do you know? I didn't know until I got the form from them. You know, I was messing around for eight weeks trying to figure out if you had a committee. And it was so easy for tonight for you to all learn, we haven't had one. Why wasn't anyone willing to answer me? Lot of bad faith actions here. The treasurer said, we have really good record recording, and we have multiple levels of oversight. Disagree totally. If you have all that good recording and multiple levels of oversight, why haven't you been able to answer my right-to-know request? And others that came from people. Mr. Scolara, why didn't you respond properly to his, if you had all of these investment forms that were there, that went on for 10 weeks for him, eight weeks, 10 weeks? And quite frankly?
One minute.
He did not get the correct data. The multiple, you know, so I have a really big issue. The Capital Reserve Fund for the Art Center, they authorized in February an expense for $6,900 to come out of that reserve fund, the Board of Trustees for the Art Center, to fix a floor in the Art Center. That did not get recorded on the books until November. If the trust accountant is doing the books monthly, and they're really kept online, why did it take nine months to record?
30 seconds.
I'm telling you, you are being given a lot of misinformation here. And I was very unhappy with Dawn Enwright's presentation, and she danced around your question, Alderman Jettie. You teased out the proper answer from her, but she was very hesitant to be open and transparent with this board on what is really going on with those funds. Lot of money, $70 million, and I don't think it's been well cared for. Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Good evening again. My name is Paula Johnson. I remember when you had these old benches here, they had cushions on it, that was a little bit more comfortable. I guess you didn't want cushions, because you didn't want us to hang around that long in these meetings. It is a long meeting. I just want to talk about, I've asked Mr. Perrin several times under the right-to-know law regarding the warming station that we want to set up. And I had asked him about what was going to happen, what's our liability here? I think we all really need to know what our liability is here. On an overdose, fights and injury, stabbings, homeless, you know, that ODing, you know, we talked, Alderman Moran talked about more money for it last week. And I'll tell you something, when I was elected, I could get any information I wanted when I was even on the Board of Education, because I was elected in the city. This is a two-tiered system. As a private citizen now, you can't get anything. You got to jump through hoops. I'm tired of jumping through hoops here. I'm not going to take you to court, because I don't have the money to take you to court, and why would I spend my money to take the city to court? But the majority of this board voted themselves, that $4,000 raise to $9,000, and we got to jump through hoops with city employees. It's a disgrace, a total disgrace. So when the United Way came up and said, we're looking for volunteers, I sent another right-to-know, saying, okay, you're looking for people in the evening that now can administer in the evening that now can administer NACCON. Okay? So you're talking about, when I asked about what's our liability if somebody overdoses, I can't get an answer. Now the United Way is looking for people to volunteer to take care of all this. Why can't we get an answer, our citizens? Why? Why do we have to go through hoops? This is a disgrace. Talk about transparency in government. The issue is-
One minute.
-you all work for us as our elected official. And the people that we pay the salaries to work for us because they're employees. And yet when we ask a question, we can't get an answer, nitpicking, whatever, whining, complaining. No, I pay taxes. My taxes went up a lot this year. Am I whining about it? You'd better believe I'm whining about it. And we have every right to whine about this.
Thirty seconds.
You work for us, do the job. I want an answer from Mr. Parent. I'm tired of being jerked around and everybody else in this city. Shame on all of you for allowing these employees. And also, I sent a letter to Mr. Cummings to find out, when is he going to bring back this information? That was a disgrace that Monday. Our senior citizens aren't going to be able to get a right to have income levels? $75,000? That's a joke. And why wasn't he prepared? Why aren't you asking the question? Why wasn't he prepared that night to give you all that information? Another employee that's useless. Thank you.
Period for, oh, sorry, remarks by the members of the board. I'm going to start over here. Alderwoman Timmons?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I usually don't talk about sports because I'm not a sports person, but I want to congratulate Nashua High School South for their 100th win. So they had the banner and everything at the stadium and it was fantastic. They won 100 times. I don't know what that really means, Derek, but 100 times in wrestling. It was really great. So congratulations, Nashua High South. Secondly, I normally don't do these games, but I did go to the last one when they had their 100th win and they had a, I think it was New England, because they came from all over New England for the wrestling. My grandson came in first place. I was there. And he said, I didn't lose. I said, okay, thank God, because I thought he was, because he looked like they had him pinned. And then he just flipped over and did something and he won in a minute and 53 seconds. Prior to that, he took out his opponents in less than a minute. And that was the longest. And I was like, okay, I jinxed the poor kid. And he's also from BG. So I just want my colleague in Ward Nine that they grabbed my grandson. Okay. Not even paying attention to me.
Can you repeat that?
I'm giving BG a thumbs up with my grandson-
There you go. All right.
-who won first place in wrestling.
Congratulations.
And he also took first place in basketball team. He had first place all over the place. And he goes to BG. And BG did a great job, too. I don't know how they, what they came in. I just know my grandson won first place. But I do want to congratulate, congratulate Nashua High South.
Good for them, too.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I was very impressed by tonight's board. I think compromise is the flavor of the board and I appreciate that. And I think in order to do that, you have to speak action with your words. I can't find any reason why I couldn't disagree with the majority of folks tonight. And I think that most of us should be willing to bend. Or you don't have to break your principles. But I think we should be able to bend, seek compromise where there is, take all of branches when you can, because things could be worse, but they don't need to be. I think we can find ways to negotiate and for the betterment of Nashua. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
So the warming station opened last week, which I am very pleased about. I happen to know one of the participants in that, and I can say from firsthand knowledge that it was used a couple of times. And because there was a place to actually take shelter during, from the incredibly cold week we just had, and talk to medical professionals, he was able to check himself in and get a psych eval after a medication lapse. And he really, really needed that evaluation, that resources. And he needed the time and the encouragement to connect with those resources. That's what the warming station is for. It's to take people that are struggling on the streets right now and try to get them to a point where they can actually take the steps that will lead back to, you know, being a productive citizen. And I know many people don't see that, including the people who are in the middle of it themselves now. But I can say as someone who's worked for a long time with people in the streets, that they can pull themselves up and they can get themselves back on track. And they, some of our greatest leaders in the city, I would dare to say, have gone through things like this. So it's really important to remember that all of that might just start with being able to spend somewhere warm long enough to get your thoughts in order and look for the help you need. To that end, I've been seeing a little bit of confusion. The United Way is augmenting the paid per diem staff. We are still hiring for that staff. That's on the city's website. That's what we were talking about. The Health Department applied one of the recommendations that we discussed in this chamber. So we're not running it on volunteers. We're using volunteers to supplement staff because it makes sense to do that. And it does help people kind of feel out their role before they might be able to do it. Or some people may not be able to commit to a paid job of four to six hours, but they may be able to volunteer. So there are United Way, United Way is helping organizing volunteers, but there are paid staff that have been background checked. We know this because it took them an extra week and a half to be able to get them all vetted through HR to open it in the first place. So I appreciate the staff that managed to push that forward. I appreciate the staff that are going to be working overnight on the issue that is a talking point to some, but is a matter of life and death to others. And I just think we all need to acknowledge that that's a step that is necessary, is not a solution. We have a lot more we need to do to support organizations that are trying to make a difference. And then to look at the different relationships and resources that we're applying to this. So I just wanted to clear up some of the issues brought at public comment and make sure that we were all aware that we had actually kicked that off. It was cleverly hidden in all of the announcements that I made about it.
Okay. Alderman Tebow. Oh, sorry. Alderman Jettie first, please.
Thank you. So, Mayor, I'm sorry about the wastewater thing. I thought I was throwing you a softball and I thought you would just answer the question and we would move on. I didn't mean to.
We'll find out. I'm so focused on this, on the emergency prepares that that's all I'm thinking about over here.
So I wanted to, you know, mention that we've had, you know, several deaths. First of all, Jimmy Carter. I've, I met Jimmy Carter in, I think it was 1975. He came to the Nashville Rotary Club, like a lot of presidential candidates did. And I remember, you know, at the time, he would, I think he was completing his fourth year as governor of Georgia. And he was pretty unknown. He had that southern accent. And I remember thinking, oh, this, this inexperienced governor from Georgia with this southern accent, he's not going to go anywhere. And when he finished speaking, someone, someone from the back, must have been part of his entourage, you know, yelled out, you know, praise be Jesus Christ. And Jimmy Carter said, amen. And I remember thinking, wow, you know, this guy, you know, this guy's a religious nut, you know? He's not going to go anywhere. And he ended up winning the New Hampshire primary and became, in my opinion, a great president. And after his presidency, you know, he continued great work. And I watched his funeral and the eulogies were very impressive. Another death, the mayor mentioned, Bill Toomey. He's a Ward Five guy. I first met him when I was first running for alderman. I was holding my sign. He was holding a sign for, I think, all the Democratic candidates. And every, every year I'd see him at the polls. And, you know, he was a very nice guy. And, you know, he told me, when, he said, when you decide not to run again, I think I would like to run for Ward Five Alderman. And he said, I'm going to retire soon. And when I retire, when you don't run, I will. And, you know, at the last meeting, I mentioned that he had, that he was retiring. And I didn't know he was sick. And unfortunately, he died before he retired. So my condolences to his, to his family. Another Ward Five guy, Larry Zatella, who was a CPA, but volunteered his time to Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Nashua Youth Council. He also served for many years on the planning board. And I think he was still a member of the Capitol Improvement Committee. So, you know, he gave a lot of time to Nashua. And one last thing, on Thursday night, there's going to be a public hearing at 7 o'clock in the auditorium. The cable advisory TV, cable TV Advisory Committee is going to be holding a public hearing on whether or not to renew the contract with BRB Broadcasting, who is operating the public access channel. And so anyone who is interested in how the public access channel is being run for or against continuing with BRB, you'll have an opportunity to speak to the committee Thursday night. So, thank you.
Alderman Tebow?
Madam President, can you get Nessun cheaper? Just kidding. I just want to say that, a couple of things real quick to Alderman Moran, that 104,000 for the barriers would have went a long way towards some of the causes you have.
I bent just for you.
And Alderwoman Timmons, now that you are no longer a jinx, you can come to some basketball games and watch your grandchildren and your child coach and play. And lastly, Director Cummings is not totally useless. So I just want to put that on record. Whoa, easy with the praise.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, very quickly, I'm glad we passed the outside dining tonight and got that squared away for this coming year. The one thing I would like to see going forward is I'd like to see a plan. So what we're going to really do with Main Street and when we're going to do it, and have that plan come before us and get approved so that we know where we're going and when. I don't want to get in another position a year from now where we're doing the same thing again, unless we have a plan that shows what we're going to do long-term.
So I, too, would like to send my condolences once again to the family of Bill Toomey. He was just a wonderful, wonderful person. Also, this week, a former coworker of mine, Ellen Artley, who was the housing inspector for the National Housing Authority for many years, she passed last week. And Larry Zatella, he was, he was, he was a great guy. He worked for the accounting firm that did our audits. So I've known Larry for a long time as well. Besides that, I have nothing. Committee announcements. Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow at 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber, competing with the public hearing upstairs, but P EDC. And I will actually be unable to make it. I've also double booked myself with a chamber event at Pinucci's for the Young Professionals of Greater Nashua. So my colleague, who is also a young professional, though, has, from Ward One, the vice chair, has agreed to chair.
You're in luck because the, the public hearing is on Thursday night.
Oh, you know, my apologies. Thursday, I have been doing this all day. And I know my wife is watching and she can attest to that. She'll, I know she has everyone's number. She'll text you. I have thought today is Wednesday all day. You just heard me. And I just capped the night, but I meant Thursday. All those things are happening Thursday. You know who the mayor is, right? Sometimes. And where you're located.
Other committee announcements. Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion at the January 14th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Aldermen. So be adjourned by roll call.
Adjourned. Sorry. Did you have something?
They told me I wouldn't be able to speak at the meeting.
Oh, typically you would have signed up and we're already past the public comment period? I'll ask the board.
I move to suspend the rules.
Okay. You can come up, sir, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No objection. Thank you so much. I'm not familiar with the rules.
Okay.
I know everybody's tired.
We need you name an address for the record, please.
Sorry, my name is Rafael Cabanas, 21 Killian Drive. And I'm here to explain my situation because I went to the assessor's office and they told me it's this board who set the rules. And I want to explain my circumstances. I'm a single father. I work two jobs. And my real estate taxes went up like 20% compared to last year. And I hope this board is sensitive to my situation, not only mine. I know many other citizens in Nashua go through the same ordeal. And I would like to ask three things. One is that the taxes that have been approved, they are amended and they are considered like not such a steep increase. Number two is like in the future, get a mechanism to limit how much the taxes can go up. Let's put like a number, 2% plus whatever inflation you want to adjust for. And number three, make a due process where it's not a private company who makes things orally. We cannot send any written document. I provide documentation and I felt completely unheard of. And for the sake of brevity, I will stop here, but please, I would like this board to consider that the citizens of Nashua are considerably struggling because of the steep increase in the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion before us is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries and we are adjourned at 10:25 PM. Thank you, everyone. Free meeting.